Call meeting to order. Vote call, everybody, all commissioners are here, everybody's here. Item number two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of August 20th, 2019. Okay. Item number three, update on downtown art project from Romeo's. Romeo?
Thank you for having me back. I wanted to present the things that I thought you might like to know, and then if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Of course, we're a little behind schedule, so our updated timeline is at the top of this list. If you've driven by, you've seen that there's a bit of cable up. All of the cable arrived last week, and I have been spending most of my time last week and this week bundling the cable. It arrived in thousand-foot spools that are about 80 pounds. As you can imagine, I'm not going to haul those to the site and work from those, so I'm bundling them into hundred-foot sections so that they're workable on the frame. And I anticipate starting that on Saturday. Yeah, I think Saturday is when that'll start, and that'll take me pretty close to two months to do. And that, of course, is weather-dependent. As we all know, it has been exceptionally hot the past two days. Looks like it's going to cool down considerably, which is great, and with cooler weather, I can work longer hours. And of course, moving into October, it will just continue to get cooler. So as long as it is safe and feasible, I'll be on-site working. After that, it's the sidewalk. The sidewalk is being created by Youth Build. That's a partnership with the AmeriCorps program at CDSA, and I'm grateful for their help. They think it'll take two to three weeks to do that, of course, again, weather-dependent. After the sidewalk goes in, the trees go up, then signage, then seating, and then there's a component that is still up in the air, but we're hoping to do a sidewalk finishing using a local company who would come in and create a more aesthetically interesting sidewalk. And that would, hopefully, if everything remains on timeline, be done by December 6th. And then unfortunately, because of all of the delays with construction, the majority of landscaping, which includes the grasses and the flowers, will have to wait till spring. That is upon the advice of every master gardener, every seed company, everybody that I've talked to, every internet article I've read, everything says you seed grass, you do that in the spring. So that landscaping component will have to wait, and I wish it could happen this fall, but it's not possible. I also provided a budget. That's been a public conversation that I was a little bit fascinated by, but it's happened several times where people have expected to see the budget. In the desire to be as forthright and transparent as possible, I've broken down the budget for everyone to see. You'll see the income, we've reached our fundraising goal, the income...
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Not a small feat. Yeah, so the fundraising goal, our income has exceeded what our goal was. You see the expenses are higher than the income. There are some adjustable items on there, like the seeding, the budgeted amount for seeding can be scaled back. It's based upon the seeding I want, not necessarily the seeding we'll get, and that's budget. And also, the sidewalk finishing is a major line item in our expenses. And if we can't raise enough money, then we won't do it. In the expenses category, Dana, if you'll scroll up just a tiny bit, just thank you. The variables that have not, that are not fixed costs include signage, sidewalk finishing, and seeding, and a bike rack. Like, I'd like for there to be a bike rack on-site, and I picked one, and I think that'd be a super cool addition. If we can't raise the money for it, then we won't do it. If you'll scroll up to the rendering, please, Dana. This gives you a sense of what the cable will look like on the frame. Of course, this is a digital rendering, so those lines are precise because I can control that in Photoshop. But it's pretty accurate to what the view will be like. You can see the frame unrendered, and then the frame rendered, so that gives you an idea of what those look like. And then if you'll scroll up one more time, Dana, this is the spectrum of colors that will be used in that cable, and it will go from black at the very top to the lightest blue at the bottom. So, that's my update, and can I answer any questions?
What are you looking for in the concrete finish? Are you looking for stamped concrete?
You know, I really wanted it to be stamped, and I talked to painters, and all the painters were like, uh-uh, don't do that, it won't last, it'll wear off quickly, you need to talk to this one company. Am I allowed to say companies? Like, in a... Okay. So I've been talking to Copperhead Coatings, and they are excited about the possibility of doing this, and I am excited about what they could do, and that could include some kind of vinyl overlay that would be trapped within the layers of their coating. But their coatings are such that they're used in a lot of institutional settings and on driveways and stuff because they're really durable and really strong, and so that's what I'm thinking about.
Is that kind of like what they did at the gazebo and courthouse lawn?
That's exactly what they did at the gazebo and the courthouse lawn. Yep.
We use the coating at the city and floor.
We use it at the service center, so if you want to go take a look at what they've done, you can come over to the service center and see.
Oh, cool. Thanks. They sent me a video of this material that they can add to any of their coatings that has a flake in it, that has a glint, a glimmer, and so when you walk along, it flashes like little stars or fireflies. It's quite beautiful, and so whatever we do, I'm sure that that would be a component of it.
Gerald, being that the suspense has been busted on this one again, is there a... Do we need to do something to extend it, to put another suspense, or are we just waiting for whenever?
I think that's ultimately up to the commission. We could... I believe I'd have to review the contract again, but I believe we could just let Romy finish it on the timeline that she's mentioned. We could update it again and capture that timeline if you'd like to.
Definitely.
Okay.
I'd like there to be some type of motivation in order to be able to meet the suspense, and not anything that you're not trying your best in order to be able to get it done. But we're entering into year three of this project, and as it stands right now, we're still at least a year away. I saw what your timeline is, and I can appreciate what you're shooting for, but there's some of the things in which you have on there I just don't see as feasible. But I'd like for us to have some... And there needs to be some teeth behind it, because right now, we're just setting up dates and continue to kick the can down the road, down the road, down the road, down the road, down the road. This is the third extension at this point, so we need to...
What's the alternative, though, Jonathan? I mean, she's raised a quarter million dollars, a quarter million dollar donation being made to City Enid that we're paying 30 grand for. There's in, on the site of Metelier, our nonprofit, not Romy and I, my mom and I, our nonprofit where she's working out of, there's... How many feet of cable?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand feet of cable that's delivered. It's cool, it's special, it's unique, it's taking a little while, takes longer.
It's very subjective. All the descriptions that you give right now are very much subjective.
Well, I feel like unique probably isn't subjective, but in this instance, it's also not like we're doing anything else with the property. It's not like we're going to go take it down, get the money back, and it'd be a... I mean...
You say that like it's not an option? I'm not saying...
That's a crazy option.
Okay. What I said was is that it's, you're saying it like though it's not an option. Whether or not you feel like it's crazy to you or not, again, that's another subjective term, you can use that as much as you'd like, but again, it is an option that we do have the ability to do. I'm not saying that it's the best option, but I do think we have an obligation in order to be able to, as we come to these suspenses that are set up, analyze what our options are, whether they be crazy or otherwise, in order to be able to make a determination about what we're going to do from that point going forward. And I don't think that's unrealistic or unreasonable.
I mean, I think that there's no other reasonable option.
There we go with the reasonable term. So what may be reasonable to you is maybe reasonable to me, and this is one of the reasons why we have a commission made up of multiple individuals that represent the community as a whole, that we get to make a determination of what's going to happen. Like the next vote, like the previous ones, I may be completely outvoted in that, but I think we owe the people of the community an opportunity to be able to express what their feelings are on the subject. And I don't, again, I don't think I'm pitching a fit right here, I just think we should, again, hold ourselves, as well as the, you know, Romy, accountable in terms of what we're doing and continuing to move forward, or if we decide to...
Well, not question what kind of a precedence it's set on any future projects that should have taken six months and has turned into three years. You know, I think we're going to lose the backing of the individuals of our... People need it if it constantly runs long, extremely long. So I'm in agreement with you, Jonathan, I just, you know, I just question how that thing strung out so much. And I understand, tough projects string out some.
Our hotel, for instance.
I agree. I'm not in favor of that one either, taking forever.
Some things just take time, it's still worthwhile. And let's, again, not lose track of the fact, here, folks, it's a big, unique, maybe not universally beloved, but a big, unique donation made to the City Enid. We own it. Quarter million dollar donation. It's not insignificant.
I can think of lots of things that cost a lot of money that somebody would try to give me that I would turn down flat out. If we're just doing it based purely on the aesthetic value and the dollar amount, then that's not necessarily a great reason to accept something or continue to move forward on something. But I do think it's an opportunity for us to be able to analyze our decision-making, whether or not we've made a good decision each time, and if we have, continue to move forward. But if not, we still have the ability to be able to say, hey, this is our opportunity in order to be able to take a step back and say, this probably wasn't the best decision, and we can go ahead and move on from this project and look to the future to do something else. If that's not the case, then great. But we don't have to keep moving forward as though, you know, that's not an option, or it's a crazy option to analyze our decision-making.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think I hear what the commission's talking about is some kind of agreement. Just as your city manager, I would say this is not a unique situation in the perspective of we have challenges from time to time getting projects done timely. The hotels already been mentioned, that's a difficult project. Again, that's a private investor for the most part, the city has incentivized it primarily with the parking lot and the property, so when that happens, it's still going to be a win for the city. A great project going on at Cleveland and Gariot now has taken a long time. I don't know what timeline was initially given to that project. Well, the initial timeline was with a developer that we were unable to keep, and I think the developer was unable to keep, but we plugged ahead, and I'm glad that we did because we're making progress. So I'm not trying to take sides here, I'm just...
It's not what it sounds like, Gerald.
Take a side, that's the right one. We want a precedent, folks, we want a precedent, people can come to Enid and do interesting things and take risks, and that just because it doesn't go perfect, we're not going to thumb our nose at. We want people to come here and take risks and do interesting things.
We want to set a precedent, that we want to, when we have people to do projects or whatever the case may be, that when they set a timeline, they will adhere to it.
We fail by that all the time, though, Jonathan. It's a standard that simply with complicated things can't be held to.
So I'll give you an example. Each one of those other examples that you brought up, we met multiple times during that process when suspenses were busted, when the project didn't come through the way it was supposed to, in order to be able to reanalyze or evaluate whether or not we were on the right path, or whether or not we needed to change course. That is simply, all I'm saying at this particular point, is that we need to take a self-check to figure out whether or not we are still headed in the right path.
I also think that what you're setting up is a little silly in light of where things are. This isn't some complicated, multi-legged, $20 million project.
At two...
Stick with me here.
At two years, at two years approaching three, on a project that started out as a $60,000 project and is now at over a quarter of a million dollars, you can't tell me that...
That we're not paying for.
It doesn't, that doesn't, that does not matter. The scale has changed, the look of it has changed, the material in which to use it has changed. Just about, I mean, outside of the fact that it was an art project, the only thing that... That's the only thing that hasn't really changed at this particular point. Our responsibility of the project and the scope and all of these things are going to change in the process is to come back and look at it and say, do we still want this?
I think the point I'm making, Jonathan, is that it's two-thirds done, it's three-quarters done. The hard part's done.
We're at the bare minimum, in best-case scenario, a year away from it being completed. The most, some of the most difficult aspects of doing the art project right now still have yet to be accomplished.
To be fair, the most difficult aspect was rating $200,000, which, by the way, that's done. The second most difficult was probably erecting that steel, which I watched a lot, that's done. Romy has this nailed, and it's going to be incredible, and it's going to be spectacular, and yeah, those are superlatives, but we don't want to set a precedent that just because someone slows down because they're doing something hard, we give up.
I think the precedent is just as dangerous as not holding folks accountable or ourselves accountable when we don't do what we say we're going to do when we're representing the community.
It's better to try and fail than not to try.
You're not giving us an opportunity to fail. You don't even want to evaluate whether or not we failed or not.
This isn't that complicated thing.
You keep saying it's not complicated. If it was simple, it would have been done in the six months that it's going to be done in.
The decision we have in front of us isn't that complicated. Do we let her finish it or not?
It's not that complicated.
It's a binary choice.
It's not that complicated because you have been more than overly committed to this project, you never approached the objective from the very beginning. And so if you've been overly committed, you've never taken an objective look at the project to say whether or not it's even, it's even what it was projected to be in the very beginning. An objective look at this from the very beginning to say, okay, is it going to be what they said it was going to be at this point? It's not what it was made out to be in the beginning. From cost to scope to scale, it was, from the very beginning, it was supposed to be a monument. It wasn't a monument, it was a structure, which means even the regulation that was going to guide how it was going to be dealt with has changed from the very beginning. So, again, all I'm saying...
From the outset, it's been clear that you don't like it, but it's a piece of art, so it's a subjective thing. What I'm talking about is being simple. In front of us is not the piece, it's our choice. We have a binary choice.
Yes.
Does Romy finish it, or do we make her stop?
Correct.
It's just, that part's not that complicated. It's not some big analysis, it's, okay, do we do it or not?
Correct. And that's all I'm saying, we need to evaluate that and make a decision.
Then, Jonathan...
It amounts to seven lights, that's all it is.
Then, Jonathan, let's call a spade a spade, and not couch it in terms of some overly complicated, we need to do a reevaluation of where we are and the status of the project, is are we shitcanning it or not?
I generally don't speak in those types of terms when talking about something of this nature. I was trying to be, you know, diplomatic and polite. I don't think there's any need to, you know, to speak in those terms.
But Jonathan, what do you want?
What do I want?
I want, yeah, that's what I need to know.
Personally, from my position, I don't believe in the project. I don't think it warranted the support in which we gave it and the property in which we donated in order to be able to get it done, and I believed that from the very beginning. The people that I've spoken to, by and large, believe the very same thing. And so with that position, as it continues to bust suspenses, as it continues to bust budget marks, as it continues to go beyond the scope in which we talked about in the beginning, I continue to be reassured, might have been on the right track from the beginning. So for my position, I'll continue to vote that position.
No, but what do you want? You didn't answer the question asked, do you want to go demolish it? Is that what you want?
Sure, tear it to the ground, reestablish the grass, take down that big mound of dirt that's got grass growing off the top of it, make it, turn it back into a green space until we can decide on what it is that we want in that particular place. And that's my position at this particular point. If everybody else involved decides they want to continue on with that project, great. I'm not going to lose a wink of sleep over it, but I still think I should voice my position in this particular endeavor.
Glad we got to the kernel there.
Thank you.
With our...
I understand, I understand, thank you.
No problem.
I think I clearly understand what you've asked for, any commissioner can ask or something to be on the agenda, so we will work on that, and then you guys can have a robust decision and take whatever action. I think we'll need to put some thought in, probably in visit with some of you about...
There's no thought involved, Gerald. You heard me.
It's simple enough to extend it.
Do we both demolish it or let her finish it?
But what is, but what is the, I mean, if that's what it is, then, again, you guys can determine that, but I was... You're getting ready to get updated on a project that's a difficult, difficult project. I'm not going to stand here and say that we have made a purposeful decision to delay that project to pursue the C-MAR approach. At some point, somebody may see that as it's just delayed, I don't know. I understand what you've asked for, extend the timeline, bring it back, and you guys can take whatever action you want.
I have kind of a question from a rookie who really hadn't watched this for two years except in the new spectrum. Do we still owe her money? Or have we paid what we're going to pay?
We signed it, the original contract, I think there's been one extension, this would potentially be a second one, authorized $30,000 from the PACE committee budget, which is the Public Arts Commission of Enid budget. Out of that, it's broken down into $12,000 was given upfront, and she had that in her listing. $12,000 would come later upon completion, I think is what the agreement said, and then $6,000, which was based on a percentage, whatever percent that is, 20% or something, is held back for maintenance, for future maintenance, demo, to...
So there's some more money that we have agreed to pay, or when we get to another milestone?
Yes, and maybe that's a way, if that helps with the commission effort. The way the agreement's written now, the $12,000 will come at the end, or it will be forfeited if it wasn't done in the timeline, something like that.
Thank you.
Romy, I have one question for you. What is the material made out of, the strands?
It is a 3/16 steel cable with a 1/16 vinyl overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, if you've got something to say, say it, otherwise...
Well, thank you for asking, because I was sitting here with the same feeling you are, but you know, what did we, you know, what's going on here?
We missed the big part, I guess.
Exactly. And so all I have to say about it is, that's really cool, those strands coming down that way. I kept trying to get my head around it, what, she was webbing or what, but I'm real pleased with all that, so good on you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry it's taken a really long time, because I know you, you're not the kind of person that likes to sit around, but it seems like to me you've had some weird things happen, so I'm sorry that's the way it is.
Fundraising's weird.
You know?
Well, the fundraising was not the cause for any delay, to be clear. The fundraising has not been the reason. I mean, the weather was a huge obstacle this spring in finishing the frame, and until the steel was welded and in place, we couldn't do anything else. And so, I mean, it's just, like, who could have predicted that we would have as much rain as we did? To Commissioner Waddell's comment that the whole thing has changed, everything has changed, one thing has changed, and that's been the cable. The frame has been consistent, the plan for the grounds has been consistent, everything else has remained consistent throughout the entire project. We've changed the surface from, through various iterations and landed on cable, but I just, I want to be very clear, it's not like it's been back to the drawing board every single time, it's been one component that's been resolved for quite a while. We've been talking about cable, so I just want to put that out there on the record for anybody who's paying attention and thinking that I have changed this repeatedly.
So do we have any idea what that piece of land's valued at?
It is in a floodplain, so it's difficult to build anything.
Floodway, it's not just a floodplain, it's a floodway.
Difficult to build anything there, which is, which I understand may be part of the reason why that pile of dirt's still there, because I haven't heard if we're going to have to, I don't know if you got the lights changed or fixing the dirt, but anyway, I don't know. We can value it different ways, we could have a appraisal done, I don't know if we ever have.
Do we know how much we paid for it?
We can, I don't have that number in my head, but yes, we could look up that number. And so that would have been a significant amount, of course.
So we're going to have more than $30,000, that was what I'm saying, with the land and everything.
Yes, with the land and everything.
And we could have half a million.
Well, that's probably not a reason... We own it at the end of the project. It's not privately owned, we own all of it. So we don't, we're not losing anything, and we are prohibited from building so much as a bathroom on that site because of the floodway restrictions. When I have piece of property that's in the floodway, and I couldn't, I couldn't build a dog fence if I wanted to.
I also, just in case you're not aware of this, I mean, from the beginning, when we were proposing this, I've seen the plans where this piece of land has been slated as a green space with public art on it for a while. I mean, I've seen the renderings that the city has created, and I think that's probably based upon, you know, whoever comes in and does your consulting and says this would be an ideal place for that. Public art has been what's been slated for this property for a while. And even in the rendering that I saw with the big red plop-and-drop sculpture that was placed in there as a placeholder, that piece of art depicted in that rendering would have cost more than a quarter of a million dollars.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Romy.
Okay. Item number four, discuss Colake program update.
Don't tell us you're in a delay.
We're in a delay. We're in a delay. Just a little bit more expensive. But to be honest about it, it was a delay we chose. The commission and the city manager has a strategic decision to change the acquisition strategy.
It was a joke.
Well, I'm sorry, we don't have a sense of humor that we're aware of.
The engineers are real guys.
We're engineers.
They're engineers.
That's good.
Okay. We're here to bring you an update on our status on this program. A couple of things that we're going to go over is we'll give you a brief schedule update, C-MAR schedule. I know that's something that I keep getting questions, and we are really close to giving you the right answer, which is almost out the door. And answer questions about environmental, we've made great progress there, and then, of course, land acquisition and fund design amendment. Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Mayor and Manager. It's great to be back before you again, it's been a couple of months, I think I was last year in June. Before we get too deep into the presentation, though, if you guys will bear with me and allow me to reintroduce some very vital team members, we have some new commission members, and then maybe an actual introduction of a team member that even some of the veterans around the table have not had a chance to meet yet. I'll start with, and I have some notes here, because if I wanted, if I said what I really wanted to say about these guys, it may not sound good to the public, so I have a few notes to keep me on track. Shane Smith is a vice president and partner with Garver. Shane has over 20 years of experience as a water resource engineer. Shane has been the right, my right arm for this program since it began. He is the deputy program manager, and maybe more importantly, and why I wanted to take a timeout tonight to reintroduce him, is that he's also serving as the design phase leader as we're embarking upon that design phase now. He'll be leading the 11 different design projects that we're moving into, as will Eric. Eric Flady serves as a senior project manager for Garver. Both of these guys work out of our Norman office. Eric also brings over 20 years of engineering and construction experience to the program. Eric actually has a very unique background, spent quite a bit of time with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as a construction engineer and project manager, actually kind of closed out his military career right here in Enid, working at Vance Air Force Base. But prior to his immediate employment at Garver, Eric served as six years as a water resource project manager for the city of Stillwater, managing their, excuse me, managing their long-term water supply program, which was a little smaller than yours, also involved Colake. It's about $100 million, excuse me, about $100 million program if I'm not mistaken, but had all the same infrastructure elements that we have involved in our program today. So you're going to see a lot more of these gentlemen moving forward. In fact, we are looking for office space as we speak to house these guys on a rotating basis a couple of days a week, so if you have any office space for lease, or hopefully for free, we would love to accommodate that if possible. All right, well, let's jump in. Thanks for allowing me to take that little diversion tonight. Let's jump into the presentation, update you on the program schedule. We are still in Phase Three. We are, I guess, complete, actually nearing complete, we're still doing some of the data evaluation of the survey. I'll give you a more detailed evaluation of the land acquisition status here in a few slides. C-MAR selection process is ongoing, you'll see a slide on it. Also, the environmental permitting, we are... We are getting close to, to a, our next amendment to begin the final design process. And then, and then, as you know, once that commences and we get the C-MAR on board, then we develop our guaranteed maximum price for the program. With regard to that C-MAR schedule, you'll see that requests for qualifications were issued this spring. Received those qualifications deemed four contractors qualified. We have then engaged with the help of the city of Enid and particularly its legal staff, engaged some outside counsel to assist us in developing the contracts necessary to, to protect the city of Enid's investment in this program. We wanted those construction managers to be aware of what was in those contracts before they submitted their proposals. And give them the opportunity to take exception to any of the, the items that are in those contracts. And then, um, Garver and engineering staff and your legal staff to evaluate those exceptions and determine if that's a, that's a reason or not to make a change in the contract. So that's, that's taken a little bit of time. We expect that the, the request for proposals will go out later this month, now that that contracting effort is done. Review those proposals in late September, make a, make a selection in, in late October. And hopefully have a, the first phase of a construction manager contract before this body sometime in November of this year.
Did we see the RFP when it gets sent out? Will you ship us a copy then?
Absolutely, I think that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I've been through both parts of the agreement and general conditions. As soon as we get them wrapped up and it's ready to go out, I'll, General will do what he wants.
Now, now, this is a slide that you guys have seen a lot, especially you, you folks that have been on the commission for, for a couple of years. And I am just tickled to report to you that those top three bullets have a hundred percent next to them. And we owe a tremendous amount of credit, again, to the city staff, particularly your legal staff, in helping us gain access to some of the final properties that we needed to actually get, get on in order to do these biological, cultural resource and hazard material studies. So we have been everywhere we need to go to date. And that's a, that's great credit to you guys, we appreciate your help with that. So now it's rolling out all of that, all those findings up into the draft environmental assessment. And that is about ninety percent complete. Regarding land acquisition update, this is as of yesterday. Our notice of intent to approach property owners is about ninety-one percent complete. We have prepared ninety-one percent of the notice of intents and delivered those for the program. So a lot of what we can do with regard to land acquisition has been, has been done, which is ahead of schedule if I'm not, not mistaken. Actual offer packets have, that have been prepared, represents about seventy-four percent complete. Offers delivered to landowners represents about sixty percent complete. And easements accepted by landowners is about thirty percent complete. And you can see the, the numbers there on the slide. So great, great progress. Very pleased with the way this is going. Overall, we think we're on or ahead of schedule, so no promises that that's gonna continue. Where, where we put this ball in a private property owner's court, they have some control over the schedule at that point. But we're doing our best to keep, keep the schedule moving in your favor. Last time I had a really good question, last June, from Commissioner Stallings about some overflow elevations at Col Lake. If you guys will, guys and gals will remember, I, I did a fly-through of the lake and kind of steered around and showed you what the intake site would look like under that historic flood condition on May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And I apologize if it's, if it's hard to see some of the, the text on this slide. So I'll, I can't move over there, though, I've got a pointer here, let me see. There we go, okay. So let me walk you through this again in an, in an attempt to answer Commissioner Stallings' question. The intake pump station slab is set at an elevation of ten fifty, okay? The electrical building for the intake pump station is set at an elevation, the slab for that building is set at an elevation of ten sixty-three. So ten fifty, we start getting into pumping equipment. Ten sixty-three, we start getting into electrical equipment. The top of the surcharge, surcharge pool in Col Lake is at ten forty-seven point five. And so what we indicated in June, still, still correct, is that when the lake is at its fullest, it will still be two and a half feet from the pump station slab. And then your motors stick up a little bit higher than that. And remember, where's Lou at? We talked about, you know, accessing and pulling those motors and those kind of things that can be done from an operations standpoint. But the lake is supposed to be in an emergency overflow condition at ten forty-seven and a half. And Mr. Stallings asked a good question about, well, how, you know, how does it overflow? How do we know for sure that's gonna overflow? And so we spent some time with the lake manager, Pete. Give Pete some credit for, for contributing to this presentation tonight. And so if you'll look over here on the other side of this graphic, again, you'll see the historic Col Lake water elevation at ten forty-seven point three, two, two tenths of a foot lower than the emergency overflow of ten forty-seven point five. Now, the top of the gates in the emergency overflow condition is ten forty-seven point five. That's their normal operating top of gate. When they get above ten forty-seven point five, they go out of normal operation into the emergency operation. And those gates will go well above ten forty-seven at that point. They told us they could drain the lake. Now, the folks in, at Keystone would, would be really hurt in Sand Springs, Tulsa, and all, all points in between. And in fact, most of what they did, it's just really fascinating to me how they moved water across the state to the Arkansas River Basin, all the way up from Kansas. Really, the reason why it got so high this time is not because of a tremendous amount of rain in the watershed, although that we did receive a tremendous amount of rain. It was more so protecting what was downstream, the rains that they were getting downstream in the Arkansas River Basin. And Col Lake's ability to, to store that water, to let that kind of reside down in the Weber's Falls area and into even Russellville, Arkansas, Little Rock, Arkansas, and so forth. I happened to be at the Clinton National Library in Little Rock, Arkansas during this condition. And it was well up into the stairways that enter into the library. So Col Lake was doing its job all the way, way up in northern Oklahoma to protect this river system down in, in Arkansas. So anyway, we have more than enough capacity in those gates, those tainer gates, to go well above the two, the ten forty-seven point five overflow. What I wish I could show you is that there's a fixed overflow or fixed spillway like we have on a lot of, lot of lakes, but that does not exist on this, on this reservoir. Finally, uh, tonight we have the first introduction of our final design amendment that is forthcoming. I, it's my understanding that that will be at a forthcoming commission meeting soon. And I wanted to give you guys a brief overview of what that contains. This is the final design services for all eleven projects. This takes the thirty percent preliminary design that we developed and completes it all the way through construction, bid-ready, BEQ-approved, construction permit drawings. And because the acquisition strategy was changed to C-MAR delivery, we'll be coordinating those efforts with the C-MAR along the way, looking for cost savings and so forth throughout the design phase. This next amendment will also allow the performance of final geotechnical investigations at the intake site itself. The designs, if you guys will remember, I don't, I don't want to, if I go too deep or spend too much time talking about this, just nod, Gerald, and I'll get, get your.
Oh, you should go deep, or as I want you to go.
Prior, prior to. Keep me on time. Prior to the acquisition strategy change to construction manager, we were gonna hire final design consultants to do this work. As a result of the construction manager soon to come on board, it's much more advantageous for the city to have one design consultant working with the construction manager on all eleven elements of the program. So Garver will be executing all of that, will be responsible now for all of that design. We will have some subconsultants that are participating with us, particularly on some of the pipeline elements. But we will be responsible, we will ultimately be the, the point of responsibility for all the design. And what that, some of you guys may remember, as we talked about the change in acquisition strategy, that just gives you now two points of contacts, two contracts to manage, my contract and the C-MAR's contract, as opposed to my contract, eleven design consultants and the C-MAR's contract. The proposed fee for the services maintains the original program budget, twelve point six million for the design services and three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the geotechnical investigation. Now, point of clarification, well, first of all, these numbers are, have aged quite a bit. And we, and the budget hasn't changed. Time value of money has certainly changed, but this, this budget hasn't changed. And the geotechnical investigation budget is actually about seven hundred thousand dollars. And this first, this first amendment will only occupy about three hundred and seventy-five thousand of that. This is a breakout of the twelve point six million dollars in design fees. Here, again, you'll see the eleven projects. And recall that one through eight are the raw water pipeline. Project nine is the intake pump station at Col Lake. Project ten is a water treatment plant. And project eleven is the finished water or treated water distribution main along Chestnut. And I think this is our last slide tonight, just an overall update in how the final design kind of fits into the overall schedule update. Recall from a few slides ago that I pointed out, we'd like to have the C-MAR contractor selected and under contract at one of your November meetings. And that's, that's reflected here on the far left-hand side. And then there's this opportunity for that new construction manager, who's now new to the program, right? To take a look at our thirty percent design and address or make comments on that thirty percent design. And ultimately update the cost opinion. So we have a, a cost estimate that it's gonna cost this much for this program. They're gonna get a chance to look at it, because they're gonna have to build it, and, and, and come up with their own cost estimate. And we'll, there'll be some back and forth, back and forth on, on what those numbers are. And if we are comfortable, by we, I mean you, if you are comfortable with the cost opinion, Garver's cost opinion and the construction manager's cost opinion, after that sixty days of thirty percent design review, then you will move into the next phase of activities with that construction manager, which is actually releasing us to begin design, which we anticipate would be January of next year. And with them kind of in our hip pocket along the way to make sure that we're maintaining budget. If you're not happy with where costs are at after this sixty-day review period, then you take an off-ramp, and we decide to go back to a different acquisition strategy. I don't know, some of you veterans may remember that discussion. But if you stay on, and we don't take the off-ramp, and we work with the contractor through sixty percent design, when we finish sixty percent design, they know a heck of a lot more about the project at that point, and they're ready to lock in their guaranteed maximum price to deliver the program. And we are anticipating that that would be in June of twenty twenty. Now, what's key about that, not only is it less than a year away, which is, which is good, but it's also a date where we could potentially close the loan for the, for the balance of this program. Interest rates are really favorable right now. I'm not, I'm not gonna talk about money, because I'm not a finance person, but I hear from your finance people that interest, interest rates are really good right now. And we're also working with the Department of Environmental Quality, who administers these, these loan funds, to see if there's any way we could potentially close even sooner than that. That's gonna, that's, that's gonna be a challenge, but I think they're, I think they're working with us. Ultimate, uh, start, ultimately, the C-MAR would start construction in December of twenty twenty with a currently planned, our planned construction schedule to be completed in June of twenty twenty-three. We hope they can bring some accelerated schedule options to us. But we'll see, we'll see what they end up coming up with. And that's, that's it for tonight.
Can you go back a slide? The next one, please. The five million water treatment plant, is that where they, so that's cleansing the water that you're bringing in from? Is that where you blend it as well?
Yes, that is. So, um, we'll convey the water about seventy miles untreated from the intake pump station at Col Lake through the pipeline. And we're gonna put it into some small terminal reservoirs. They'll sit there for a couple of hours, and then it will be released into a drinking water treatment plant. And it will undergo coagulation, flocculation, and sedimentation to remove the turbidity or the colloidal solid materials that are in the water. Then it will go, undergo ozonation treatment. And then it will undergo multimedia filtration to further cleanse the water. And after the multimedia filtration, it will undergo contact time with granular activated carbon. And that's a process that helps improve taste and odors, as well as remove any residue pesticides or pharmaceuticals and things of that nature. Following that, it will be disinfected with, through a chlorination process. And once it is disinfected, it will be then blended with a smaller, much smaller volume of groundwater from your existing groundwater system. The two blended waters will then be delivered through the new Chestnut Water Main and distributed to the community. And I think what's, what's kind of unique about the way this, the city staff went about this process is they, they evaluated a lot of different locations and ways of doing drinking water treatment. And, and what we settled on was something that allowed a lot of tools to address water quality. It's a different water than what the community is accustomed to. Groundwater's certainly different than surface water. So we wanted to, to get a lot of tools available to the city staff to address surface water issues. And then make sure everybody was drinking the same water. So, you know, one side of town wasn't drinking groundwater, and one side of town wasn't drinking surface water. And, and we, and we try to blend in the system. That, that rarely works with any success. And so I think the concept that the, the staff and Garver's team chose to move forward with is the best all-around decision for the city. I'd love to talk to you more about water treatment if you want to.
No, I'd rather talk about fishing, so when it dumps out in those basins.
We, we can talk about fishing, too.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, you put it real concise, thank you.
Any other questions, Mayor?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I did want to say thanks to you guys for, uh, I was out at the school a few months ago when you guys were involved in the STEM program. Really appreciate your support of the school program and, and helping out with that.
You bet, thank you, glad to participate.
Okay, so they gave you a good update on where we're at, C-MAR process. We'll send out the RFP so you guys can review it. I anticipate that might go out maybe next week. And then it's gonna be on the street for about thirty days. We'll evaluate it for thirty days and we'll bring it to you. The reason that we, just to give you the history, and I think you captured most of it, we think it's gonna be beneficial in the end. Generated delay now, six months already. But I think it's gonna be worth it in the end, because even if we find out that thirty percent cost opinion is way off, well, then we found out something very valuable now, instead of waiting until twenty twenty. I don't think, I mean, we'll find out what we're gonna find out. When we get to the sixty percent GNP, which I think they can get to fairly quickly in six months or so, or six, six months to get to the sixty percent design, with the C-MAR contractor on, involved and on board, this is a representative, this is the company, the representatives of the people that are gonna build the whole thing. The plant, the pipeline, everything. So that was the purpose of the request for qualifications, to get four qualified companies that we know can do this whole thing. So, and part of doing the whole thing is they can take a look at engineer plans and see if something's going to, see if they have a better idea within the parameters of what we're trying to do and the engineering standards. So there's a lot of value in that, too. But the main value, and the reason the law allows that method, is for complex projects that cost a lot of money and have scheduling issues. And that's this project. So I think it's gonna be beneficial. And certainly, I guess, we're gonna start finding out pretty soon. By November, we should be back with the.
That's when the number, that's when we get the depressing number?
Well, that's when we should be getting the C-MAR on, on board, and it's gonna take them thirty days or so to get the, to verify the.
So we get the depressing number in January?
Yes.
Fantastic, great.
But I don't think it'll be a lot different than the pressing number we already have. That's the number you're referring to. We'll find out.
Yeah.
It depends on whether we're in the throes of a recession or not.
Oh, boy.
Just thought I'd throw that in there.
Thanks.
Rosie pictures here.
Okay.
Financial advisor.
All right. Five, did we already talk about that? Discuss design amendment for Call Lake program?
Yes, they did talk about that at the end of the slides.
Okay.
Anticipate, we may be bringing that to you next meeting to get them started with the design to get going. Anyway, they'll get going towards sixty percent.
Okay.
I have an issue to ask about.
Yes.
Is the intersection that, uh, he's not even listening. The intersection at Cleveland and, uh, right there by the apartments and seems like, kinda like John, it's been going on for like two years. And I know it's an ODOT project.
Yes.
We have virtually no control, but.
We can't talk about his name.
Yeah. It's not on the study session. Is there anything?
We can update you right after he adjourns.
Yeah.
And we're gonna bring it, the next meeting on September fifth, we're gonna update on all our road projects. They own a Mitchell Bridge.
Make sure you focus on that one. And if it's an ODOT thing, we need to get some, get us information back.
All right. Good. All right. Uh, that's all we have for this. So we'll meet upstairs at six thirty. Wish to adjourn.
Thank you for watching the ENA Television Network broadcast of the ENAD City Council Study Session. Replays of the meeting will air on channel twelve and one twelve, including a live stream of the meeting at enatv.org.